It's a great day outstanding today. You have to make it that way. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here. It's great to see everyone. We do have some visitors. But again, thank you all for being here. Thanks to all the department here. So with that being said, I am calling the meeting on. And at this time, due to the fact that Pastor Black cannot be here, he's called in traffic. So the process is chemistry. We put in place that the person who is there in vacation yesterday, our council person, who will be meeting Carter moved on the indication and she will also leave to the place that we can stand in for 90 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you. We pounce right now to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to see a different day. Father God, we thank you for the opportunities that you have bestowed upon us. Again, we say thank you. Thank you for this counseling that we are about to partake in. Lord, give us the wisdom and the guidance as we deliberate our items that will be beneficial only to your glory and for every citizen here in Phoenix City. Lord, we thank you for our council members. We thank you for our mayor. And again, we thank you just for an opportunity for us to get it right again. We thank you for the leadership, not only within our community, but around the world, Father God. We ask that you would just bless and keep a hedge of protection around our first responders and that they continue to do the job that they have been called to do. Father God, we thank you for life itself and we thank you for the growth and the, we ask for prosperity, excuse me, within our city, Father God, as we continue to do what is right. We thank you for new appointed C clerk as she continued to do the job that she was called to do. We thank you for our city manager, for his leadership and his team, putting together projects and opportunity to grow our city. We thank you for the insight that they have. And Lord, we give you all the glory. We give you all the praise and all the honor. Lord, we give you all the praise, all that you give for us. We ask that you continue to bless each of us in a very special way. And Lord, all those visitors that are here today, we ask that you would just show them favors and we thank you for allowing them to be in positions where they are today. Lord, we ask these blessings upon being in your holy and precious Jesus Christ's name. Let him hearts say amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge, hallelujah to the citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with every sin, which is wrong.
Thank you. Karen. Thank you. Uh, thank you all for being here with us. So proceeding on at this time, uh, we could have a couple of proclamation and I am one called for now. Said, courage, refreshment is a proclamation recognizing building safety, Father.
Long to post.
This is safe.
Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our role and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when these acts are struck. And whereas our confidence is the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, trade people, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Coal Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quantity codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and paint. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Coal Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities. Largely unknown protectors of public safety are local coal officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting libraries and property. Now therefore, I am Eddie Enlow, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month, and the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and accordingly encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of this proclamation. Thank you, Ray and Chief Kennedy.
Yes, sir.
Also, Chief, we are all involved with that. You know, one of the things that I can say, the number one thing is, in community is the safeness of people and the cold enforcement and what our chief does and fire chief and our chief of police does. The mission is possible because it is not a destination that we get to. It's adjourned because we always have to push safety. And thank you all so much for doing that, putting your heart in it, making sure that everything is done. And sometimes when people get mad at the council for things, particularly with the building department, um, sometimes people don't take it lightly. But I will tell you this, this council is not going to apologize for doing things right because we want to do as much mitigation and as much prevention as we can. So on behalf of myself and this council, we'd like to present to you, Ray, as well as Chief, and well as Chief, this proclamation. Thank you so much. Sean, have you taken a picture?
Take a picture.
Oh, you know what?
No, you got it now. You dropped it back out of the back. I'm trying to get you out of my eyes. You're a good country.
Thanks. Thank you all so much.
To the side of you, thank you all so much.
Great.
I just wanted to say thank you, Senator, your council members. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize the Building Safety Month. Without, you know, without you guys behind us, we could not do our jobs. Uh, we're fortunate to have good people behind us that will allow us to do our job and not put a hold on us when it comes, especially when it comes to safety. And again, I couldn't do my job without, without Chief Kennedy and the Fire Department and the Fire Department's office and everything that they do to help us do our jobs every day. Uh, as far as Building Safety Month go, it is all month, all month of May. Anybody that is interested in learning more about Building Safety Month, they can go to our website, which is phoenixcityalabama.us, click on the building department, and they'll ship you links on there for Building Safety Month. And each week is a different, um, is a different title, there's different emphasis each week and a month of May that is put for Building Safety Month. There's things for kids to do, there's things for adults to do, uh, and it's good, uh, you know, good information, especially that helps with the, uh, with the kids to help them understand things that they need to look for in their, in their lives, within their homes, to help them be safe and also help their parents be safe, or even their grandparents or anybody who gets that house. And so it's, it's a collaboration of, of, of everyone. So anybody that's really interested, they can go there or if they want to, they can also contact our office, we'll be glad to hook them up with any links that they want to.
Thank you. The man's safety is, uh, is all our responsibility, that's no mistake with the council people. Thank you so much again, Ray. Proceeding on at this time, and I'd like to call on our first of the reading of the proclamation recognizing one of the building champion, Mrs. Davis.
Whereas Alabama recognizes the effortless act of service performed by its brave members of the military and their devoted families. And whereas military families continue to face the unique burden of deployments, often causes of uncertainty and constant opinion of their daily lives and routines. And whereas military families know of the sacrifices formed by military children, but their important contribution can often go unnoticed by the general public. And whereas Alabama is home to more than 30,000 military children. And whereas these children are a source of pride and honor to us all, and it is fitting that we take time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children. And whereas the recognition of April as the month of the military child provides an opportunity to contribute to military children for their commitment, their sacrifice, and their unconditional support of our service members. Because when the parents serve in the military, their kids serve too. And whereas National Purple Up Day, held in red and pink every April, honors the sacrifices made by military children and the community recognizes them by wearing purple. And whereas Purple Up Day is April 15th, 2023. And whereas the Alabama National Guard recognizes the occasion on the second Friday of April every year, and the Alabama Department of Education will observe the occasion on April 21st. And whereas on either of these three days, our families are encouraged to wear purple to show support for military children. Now therefore, I am Eddie Enlow, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as month of the military child in Phoenix City, Alabama.
Come on, three. Man, I know this needs to be spoken. But, uh, we go way back, so I can't get away calling the three. Okay? On behalf of myself and this council.
Thank you.
Some of the key words that I saw in here were righteousness and sacrificial. And the color purple goes with that because it's a spiritual, a signal of being selfless as well as being sacrificial. And that's what we all have to do as people in this country and in this world. But on behalf of our military, and if the military have to retire and their children, because I can tell you, moving around a lot is not easy. So with that said, our attention has to be focused on the children who are in that type of environment. So on behalf of myself and this council, we thank you for keeping them in front of us and reminding us, and thank you for what you do as far as this, for the military kids, but also for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Mayor Blow and the council, those fellows, our city manager and directors, want to thank you on behalf of the Military Child Education Coalition. I am proud to stand before you and announce that all Phoenix City schools, all Purple Up Schools, they support our military families. Because as you know, when those parents are gone and the families are left behind, they too have to suffer. They too have to endure those transitions and those things that sometimes are not favorable. So we want to continue to support them, we want to continue to lift them up, we want to continue to provide resources to them to help them in their educational endeavors as well as become productive citizens in our society. With the relationship that we have and the closeness that we have to support more, it's important for us to continue to recognize and support them. A lot of our military families still think Phoenix City's home. And so with that, we thank you and we ask that you continue to lift them up, support us on Purple Up Day, and thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Mayor, say something.
Come back.
Yes.
I appreciate what you do. I experienced it firsthand, one of my best friends back in 3200, right after 9/11, with Lloyd Free Town. And his only son become the best friend of my youngest son. We shared time to do baseball, soccer, boy scouts, cut scout, while his father was deployed. It was blessing to know his father was protecting us. It was a blessing to have an extra child that you could enjoy. They, not that they look up to you, Chief, but they need that companionship of mother or father that they're missing at that time. Sometimes you're missing most. There are lots of kids that happen to me, just in today's world. But when it's not the child's fault, it is the parents who served to protect our country. It's just, it's something that we all should do, stand up and just take notice. Invite them somewhere one day with you or something. Invite them to church, invite them to a school function. Just make, make them feel part of your family. This young man's going to be at Eddie in two weeks and it's happening with one that's for the wedding.
That's great.
And it's just like we're going to have the child's with, of mom. That's how close we became most of the years. And if his father never served, I would probably not have. So it's, it's, it's a blessing because a lot of times we tell the disguise, just look at it, there'll definitely be help from your eyes and your heart. So take time for all of us. I thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Proceeding on, councilor, the city clerk, the standing council, I'd like to ask this council for motion on the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for the 81st work session, as well as the 2nd council meeting, so essentially all. There at that time, I would ask that you do this, wasn't voting. So I'd like to ask again for a motion to approve the regular scheduled meeting minutes on the 2nd as well as the 1st work session. And if motion, motion will be approved. Okay, everybody have a motion, councilor, and then you have a second. Second, council member, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, councilor, at this time, I'd like to ask for any unfinished business that anyone makes to discuss. Okay, since everybody in, we proceed on. Resolutions and under administration. Council, we have a resolution number 2024-760 directed by the reference to purchase, purchasing of 1-2024 Ford F-150 Super Crew 4x4 pickup truck in 1-2024 Ford F-250 Super Crew 4x4 pickup truck purchased under state contract T-191L from Stivers Ford Lincoln, Montgomery, Alabama, in the total amount of $84,685. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the Alabama V law for public contracts, municipalities can purchase property under a state bid provided that the state bid provides. And whereas the City of Phoenix City is authorized to purchase the property here and after, described on said state bid for the utilities department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following shall be purchased under state contract T-191L with optional equipment from Stivers Ford Lincoln, Montgomery, Alabama. 1-2023 Ford F-150 Super Crew 4x4 pickup truck, white in color, at a cost of $35,242. 1-2024 Ford F-250 Super Crew 4x4 pickup truck, white in color, at a cost of $49,443, for a total of $84,685. Pass approved and adopted this 11th day of April 2024, ratified the 16th day of April 2024.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. As we credit the resolution, read of the resolution, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to grant, please.
Motion to grant, huh?
All right, we have a motion of the councilwoman Carter, we have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Dave, comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, councilor, administration. There's a resolution in reference to acceptance of the general fund insurance proposal and authorizing the purchase of insurance from the private insurance agency through Unit RE. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas City of Phoenix City's general fund has a need for property, inland marine and auto insurance to protect its accidents. And whereas Flowers Insurance Agency has provided the city with a proposal from American Zurich Insurance Company for insurance coverage for the term beginning April 15, 2024, and ending April 15, 2025, for property, inland marine and auto insurance as sponsors. Unit RE, property, $162,777. Inland marine insurance, $13,424. Business auto, $131,268. Terrorism premium included, risk management services fee, $250, which totaled $307,719. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the general fund insurance proposal and authorizes the purchase of insurance from Flowers Insurance Agency through Unit RE. Pass approved and adopted this 16th day of April 2024.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. As we've all heard, resolution at this time, that have a motion, motion will be approved. All right, we have a motion from councilwoman Carter, we have a second. Second, councilman Dave, any comments or discussion?
Okay, sir, Mayor, I'd like to keep that in mind, I'm a citizen of Phoenix City, and I remember approximately 10 years ago, uh, Eddie had been saying that we're not doing business with the Dallas City, and that it's not true, we're doing business with the Dallas City, uh, where I would have been there, and we should go and visit the Dallas City today. I just wanted my citizen, I wish you'd go and visit the Dallas City. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Any other comments? If not, at this time, council, I'd like to call for a phone, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Proceeding on, council on the building department. We have a resolution in reference to purchasing 2-2024 Ford Explorer utility vehicles from Stivers Ford Lincoln, Montgomery, Alabama, in the total amount of $77,700. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas under the Alabama V law for public contracts, municipalities can purchase property under a state bid provided that the state bid provides. And whereas the City of Phoenix City is authorized to purchase the property here and after, described on said state bid for the building department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following shall be purchased under state contract T-191L, contract number 22000003128-3, with optional equipment from Stivers Ford Lincoln, Montgomery, Alabama. 2-2024 Ford Explorer utility vehicles, white in color, at a cost of $38,535 per vehicle, for a total cost of $77,700. Pass approved and adopted this 16th day of April 2024.
Dave. As we heard, resolution, at this time, uh, the next, this council will vote. Motion will be approved, we have a motion, councilman Dave, we have a second. Second, councilman Gordon, any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Love.
Yes.
Proceeding on, council on the economic development department.
Question.
You do have a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign a bill of support endorsing the United Way of Chattanooga Valley's application to the Economic Development Administration for the Recompete Pilot Program Grant. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to addressing unemployment and removing barriers to the employment for individuals within our community. And whereas Economic Development Administration's Recompete Pilot Program Grant aims to support initiatives that facilitate the reintegration of individuals aged 25 to 54 who are currently not in the workforce. And whereas the United Way of the Chattanooga Valley was selected as one of the 22 finals to compete for up to 50 million to support community-wide initiatives that remove barriers to training and employment for citizens. And whereas Chattanooga Valley Community College, Phoenix City Schools, and Russell County Schools, among others, are set to receive benefit from this grant by hauling their advanced manufacturing pathways. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign a letter of support endorsing the United Way of the Chattanooga Valley's application to the Economic Development Administration for the Recompete Pilot Program Grant, which aids specific focus on removing barriers to employment for individuals ages 25 to 54 not currently in the workforce. Pass approved and adopted this 16th day of April 2024.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. This council, we have all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from councilwoman Carter, we have a second.
Second.
Second from councilman Dave. Comments or discussion?
Hey, yes, sir, Mayor, please just remind me, not pre on that for our citizens, please. Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Councilor.
Good morning, Councilor.
So there has been a, a lot of effort, a lot of, a lot of tireless work on, on putting this grant together. We're, we're appreciative of being a part of that group to be able to help with this process. Um, so as we discussed yesterday in great detail, so I'm, I'm extremely excited with the potential, or really the reality of what this grant can do to our, to our communities. We discussed yesterday, um, how the grant would be, how the grant would be worked. I've got someone much more suited to be able to present that information to you today. So if you don't mind, I'd like to transition to General Andy Hill, who's been a part of this process since inception, um, and describe a little more to tell us what this grant scores. Thank you.
All right, good morning. Good morning, Mayor, good morning, the council. Good morning, Dave, thank you. And thank you also for your continued leadership and for all that you do for your citizens. Um, as Mr. Napoleon said, um, this is the, uh, Department of Commerce's Recompete Pilot Grant, and, uh, we are competing, as, as he stated, under the United Way of the Chattanooga Valley umbrella. We stood up this task force last summer in response to Commerce's announcement of a $50 million grant for distressed communities. And so I have to, you know, say that we are considered a distressed community. We're competing as the metropolitan statistical area, which includes Russell County, Phoenix City, uh, and then Columbus, Mesquite County, and some of the surrounding rural, toward counties, seven counties in, in total. Um, and we, we qualify because our prime age employment group, uh, which is people between the ages of 25 and 54 are considered underemployed. And within our metropolitan statistical area, 70% of that demographic is permanently employed. So they either cannot find work or they choose not to work. Nationally, the average is 8%. So last summer, with help of Mr. Napoleon, we stood up the task force and we identified barriers to employment as well as opportunities to create new jobs and better pathways for people to access them. Um, we submitted a plan last fall and I was really pleased, and I think you're, well, obviously, I'm, I'm here now, so it went well. There were 600 communities across the nation that applied and we were selected as one of 22 finals. And so, um, we are in the final throes of getting our final base, two applications submitted as to April 25th, and we'll find out later this summer if we're one of the four to eight communities that will be selected as a winner. And so ultimately, what's at stake for us is up to $50 million, which will be spread across essentially five programs, five, five sub-projects. Specific to Phoenix City and Russell County, I think what you would be interested in, and as the resolution stated, uh, we are, with the grant seeking to purchase a, a fairly high volume of equipment for CBCC, uh, which will enable that to increase our mechatronics and industrial maintenance programs, which are, um, particularly, uh, uh, particularly helpful to, to people, citizens who want to enter the advanced manufacturing disciplines, which is projected, the local labor market outlook for that is, is very good. We think we'll see 10% growth in advanced manufacturing within our region over the next couple of years. And then, of course, there's a lot of chips for chips, and as we continue to attract and incentivize semiconductor manufacturing here to the, to value, you can see, which, which really is advanced manufacturing, we, we potentially can see that market explode uh, more than, than what is currently protected. Also included in the grant is the establishment of two adult education centers, which would be located at both, uh, Phoenix City Central High School and Russell County High School. And those would double as mechatronics laboratories. And those would double as mechatronics laboratories for students during the daytime and a career pathway, which currently does not exist. And then, as I mentioned, double as adult learning centers at night. We're also looking to expand and grow some of our vocational reentry programs, such as Better Work Jobs for Life, which has a, a campus, uh, or a, a training location on the Troy University campus. Um, so those are some of the things I think would be of particular interest. The lion's share of the monies, uh, within, within our spend plan really is designed to go into the hands of people to get them incentivized and get them back into the workforce. And so what we'll, what we'll pay for is, uh, folks who are looking to go to CBCC or a light technical school can get wages, stipends, childcare vouchers, as well as transportation vouchers, that incentivize them to get back into school, earn a certificate that gets them back into the workforce, and to offset the, the cost of that, so they can, they, they can, you know, get by on, the, the wages they're already earning while they're in school, and then have access to a career pathway where they can sustain their livelihood with, with good wages. This is about putting people into jobs, but also putting people into career pathways that, that pay you a job.
Uh, I know, Mr. Allen, right, that, uh, it's my career, you ever, uh, matching, uh, dollars every year?
So that, that's a great question, and what the, th- this, this letter that you're, that you just, the motion that you just approved will be very helpful, because the, the EDA, Economic Development Administration, they really want to see that communities are bought in and that they'll support the plan. And so they, they like contributions, but there's no prescribed match. They want to know that if during the five-year span of the grant, are they throwing good money after, after good money? They want to make sure that they'll see this, I mean, it's tough to us to show them a sustainability plan, and then with a resolution such as yours, expressing governmental buying for the plan, that's, that's really what they're looking for. That's a great question, but there's, there's no prescribed match.
With those plans like that, would you mind? Probably some.
Yes, sir. So the, the, um, there, because this is federal dollars, um, there are really specific guidelines that we'll have to follow, and so a part of this will give to, uh, taking on additional positions at the United Way to ensure that we can monitor those monies and, and that they're, they're spending in accordance with federal matters.
Okay. Kenny? Did I understand or misunderstood that it would be up to four or eight communities that would be receiving?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. So four to eight communities across the nation will be selected as, as winners. We, we, we expect that announcement later this summer, July or August. So we, we hope to be one of those, one of those communities.
Which give us out of the sense. Yeah, you got it.
The, the other thing is we found out is, again, I'm, I'm pretty bullish, um, on our chances here. We enjoy really good support, um, with our elected leaders. But, um, what, what the, the Department of Commerce has told us is, even if we were not to be selected as a winner this year, they do plan to have a round two, and ultimately probably a round three and beyond. And if we were not selected, we would automatically be declared a finalist for the next iteration. So all of this hard work, um, over the last year, um, is, is, you know, it's, it's going to pay off, hopefully this summer, but, but if not, in the subsequent. And I'll tell you, Mr. Polian, if I can just flip stock about him real quick, he's really good at what he does. We spent a lot in the last few weeks meeting with your local employers here, particularly your manufacturers, and we've gotten really good feedback from them on the program. They're excited about it, and what they, what they committed to do, and this goes to your question, sir, about the, the, the match, they've committed in writing to interviewing, uh, these, these folks that graduate these programs, so they will push them to the top of their, their, uh, their employment list. They can't guarantee they'll hire them, obviously, it's, you know, it's up to all of us to sell ourselves in an interview, but they will commit to interview them because they're going to possess the skills that they need. So, Mr. Polian, it's okay.
When we suffered a preseason, we, we, we win again, now this, go ahead and win. Win playoffs.
Can we ask finally, of course, uh, any dynamic awareness statement? What's the sense to, uh, like football, kind of Phoenix City, you know, with what that would say? Each?
So I'm going to give you, I'm not a lawyer, I'm going to give you a lawyerly answer and say it depends. And the reason it depends is because about half of our, about half of the money that we've, we've accounted for is designed to go to, to the people that we want to help. And so what we, we have, we, we have flexibility with that, and so the, the tech colleges, community colleges that are most, you know, successful, we'd be able to attract and enroll these students, that that's where the money's going to go. So I, I did want to limit it and say, hey, CBCC, you're a pack, you know, when you have a hundred people in this program, that's it. What, what I want to do is, I want to reinforce success. And so we have a lot of flexibility in, in how the money is, is distributed.
Over five.
All right, then.
So again, if, if we are chosen, and there are seven of us, would that bring about, I mean, would, there was a five, or two, or whatever?
Great question. So, Mr. Mayor, the, the, it's fifty million dollar, up, well, up to fifty million dollars per, per winner. And what I, what they intend to do, and actually we have five projects, the, the Department of Commerce reserves their right to say, hey, we, we like your plan, and we're going to improve it, and we may only fund three of your five projects, or four of your five projects. But I think, you know, if they say like all five, with, I, what I, what I think, I, what I understand is, potentially then you would only have four communities that were selected, each receiving up to fifty mil-, or each receiving fifty million dollars.
Because there's three, right here, behind us, and it makes sense.
We want to fund all five of ours and get the full amount. And again, I, I think we have a really competitive, I mean.
Okay.
It sounds like, uh, let me just, uh, say thank you, uh, for your hard work and your optimism, uh, and, and we're going to remain optimistic about this. Uh, we will, uh, see this come to fruition. Uh, just to, we, we witness time and time again, our Economic Development Department continues to be proactive and engaged in making sure that, uh, there's businesses and opportunities, uh, for, uh, Phoenix City and its surrounding, um, cities and counties. And so thank you, my Sean, for your leadership, and continuing to make sure, you know, we, we look out and we, we're futuristic when it comes to having our approach, to make sure that we get employees, educated in this, and, you know, just keep employment at the top and forefront of citizens right here in Phoenix City, keeping that, those dollars here. And so for us to be, um, uh, we're, we're great partners and supporters of, uh, United Way, uh, of the Chattanooga Valley, and, and as long as I serve on council, I will continue to be very supportive in that regards. And so again, I just want to say thank you. I mean, this just sounds so, um, it, it, it sounds so good to hear that we are looking out for the future of Phoenix City, as we always do, and Russell County, and, and those that, uh, you know, play, worship, and work right here in our community. So thank you, uh, for the great work that you're making.
I appreciate that a lot, man.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you again. Appreciate the time, everybody. Thanks again, you're a good show. Okay?
Yeah, I, I know, it sounds like Sean. Well, you might call it request. Uh, this is about, it, it, it's different, man. You remember the chip, the chip over there today? That came for, what, they're all that. So, generally, this is also the chip for chips, perfect timing. Um, so we are continuing to work, um, with, uh, with the chips development, we're continuing to see property, we're continuing to have these conversations, uh, we're continuing to pursue different prospects. And so I think, uh, what we'd like to do is sit down and have a cool time to be able to pursue to your full and up end, you know, probably might suggest you if that's okay, um, so we can make sure that all the parties in the team are present to do that. But those things are continued to move forward. So we're, we actually met at Auburn University last week, we, we, they've got a fantastic city conductor program there, more than we actually expected, if I'm honest, it's fantastic. So we are surrounded by a tremendous amount of opportunity. I think that we want to be able to capture that the best we can, and I'd like to present you just a, a bit of a, um, the workshop session soon.
Okay. Thank you, sir. It's up. Just there, no other comments or questions or discussion? Time, Council, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, Council, proceeding on, on the Engineering Department. Is a resolution in reference to authorize an American City Manager to sign a bill of agreement for the responsibility to the possible project cost overrun for the A-trip and B-2 project for intersection improvement in US two eighty slash US eighty. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the Alabama Department of Transportation has awarded a twenty-twenty-four A-trip B-2 project to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City does not anticipate a project cost overrun above the awarded A-trip two amount of, on this project. And whereas, in the event that such an overrun should occur, the City of Phoenix City agrees to be responsible for this overrun. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City of Russell County, Alabama, hereby agrees to be responsible for a project cost overrun above the A-trip two awarded amount on the twenty-twenty-four A-trip two project, in the event such an overrun should occur. Be it further resolved that the City Council hereby authorize and direct the Mayor to sign the letter of agreement for the aforementioned cost overrun. Pass approved and adopted the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. Council of Auburn, heard it. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Day, now it's second. Second, Councilwoman Florida. Any comments on discussion?
Uh, Mayor, could you just put a little, a little, I mean, bring some chips, light on that?
Light.
Yes, but the layers, Council, this is more less like a statement, an assurance and a alibi, that, uh, the project is two hundred, uh, two million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars. The city's committed to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and two. And if it happens to go over to anything above two million, we would be responsible for, for paying. But keep in mind, we're already committed to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and two. Now this is based on valid assets, so hopefully it's saved in that, they don't foresee it anymore, but if so, we would, would be responsible for any additional loans.
Thank you.
So, just, just, like, intersection, I do? Yes. All day? That's it, right. You know, they're doing a turn lane, giving off JR, adding on to two eighty, then they're putting in a through lane on two eighty, and then it touches.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
We've got a, I don't know, I spent.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments on discussion? Not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Also, Council on the Engineering Department, is a resolution in reference to accepting the lowest quote from Northern Tools to purchase a budget one ton chain or slip in an amount not to exceed one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. This is Davis.
Whereas, the Vehicle Maintenance Division of the Engineering slash Public Works Department of the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase a budget one ton chain voice lift. And whereas, Northern Tools has provided the lowest quote for a budget one ton chain voice lift in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the purchase of a budget one ton chain voice lift from Northern Tools in an amount not to exceed one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Pass approved and adopted the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, approve the resolution at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Carter, now it's second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Day. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council on the Engineering Department, is a resolution in reference to accepting the lowest quote from Granger to purchase, they said, two twenty-ton trucks ramps in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the Vehicle Maintenance Division of the Engineering slash Public Works Department of the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase a set two twenty-ton truck ramps. And whereas, Granger has provided the lowest quote for a set two twenty-ton truck ramps in the amount of eight hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-six cents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the purchase of a set two twenty-ton truck ramps from Granger in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-six cents. Pass approved and adopted the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Council, again, the third resolution agreement first, seven nine nine, motion to approve. Uh, we have a motion from Councilwoman Gordon, now it's second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. We have the motion, we have the second.
Yes, sir.
Any comments on discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, Council on the Engineering Department, we have a resolution in reference to the purchase of one twenty-twenty-four Ford Explorer utility vehicles, vehicle from Silver Score Lincoln in this map, that exceed thirty thousand, I think, thirty-six dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, under the Alabama VIT law for public contracts, municipalities can purchase property under a state bid provided that the state bid so provides. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase a property here and after, is prescribed on said state bid for the Engineering Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following shall be purchased under state contract T one nine one L, contract number two-two zero-zero, 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 three-one-two-eight dash three, with optional equipment from Silver Score Lincoln in Montgomery, Alabama. One twenty-twenty-four Ford Explorer utility vehicle, white and color, at a cost of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Pass approved and adopted the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. You've heard the resolution, Council, and at this time, we ask for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
And a motion from Councilwoman Day, now it's second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Day. Okay. Any comments on discussion, Council? Okay, if not, at this time, I'd like to ask for a vote with this, Davis.
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council, now on the finance department, we have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the City Manager's signed engagement agreements with the arbitrage group for arbitrage rebate calculation services for the city's outstanding revenue warrants. And this is Davis?
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City has the need for arbitrage rebate calculation services for its outstanding revenue warrants. And whereas, the arbitrage group has provided a proposal to provide arbitrage rebate calculation for the series twenty-twenty-eight water and sewer revenue warrants, and will provide engagement letters to perform these services for other outstanding revenue warrants as needed. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and directs the City Manager to sign engagement agreements with the arbitrage group for arbitrage rebate calculation services for the city's outstanding revenue warrants as needed. Pass approved and adopted the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for bringing up the resolution. As Council of Auburn, at this time, I'd like to ask this Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Day, now it's second. Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Comments or discussion? Okay. Since there are not any, at this time, I'd like to call upon the court for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the Engineering Department, is a resolution in reference to clear several items as surplus as listed on Exhibit Eight, to be sold as scrap or disposed of at the city landfill. This Davis.
Whereas, the Information Technology Department of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purchases. And whereas, Section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six of the Alabama Code nineteen-seventy-five as amendment, authorizes a municipal government body to dispose of unneeded personal possession. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described property as listed on the attachment and title Exhibit Eight is hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or be disposed of at the city landfill. Pass approved and adopted this sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council of the third resolution. Second, may I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Uh, if you have a motion, from Councilwoman Carter, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Bailey, any comments or discussion?
Uh, yeah, of course, as I look at this, let's, if you're a accountant, you got some in your belt and the computer, Charlie stuff, by a plane, you will be, you will end up building that, right?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, depending on storage or anything on the hard ground, it is just plugged with wire.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, Mike. It's for state. Senator Davis, and actually, at this time, council, I'd like to call for a vote. You understand this?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seating on council on the courts and regulations partners, with a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to enter contracts was completely unchanged as performed at Phoenix City Amphitheater on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars. Steven Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with four completely unchanged to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas, the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of six thousand dollars, split into two equal parts, with the first to be paid upfront as a deposit and the other to be paid to the bank at South Ship. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager and authorizing officials are hereby authorized and directed to sign the contract with completely unchanged to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Pass approved and adopted this sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of that resolution. Council, we've heard the resolution, at this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Gordon, may I have a second? Second, Councilwoman Bailey. We have a motion, and second, any comments or discussion, council? All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seating on, council, again, on the orders, this is the first reading. It's an order that's to exempt certain items from the municipal sale and use tax during the third full weekend of July, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yes, that's your order. Uh, on the utilities department, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gordon.
Thank you, sir.
On the utilities department, council, we have a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to accept the expulsion of Thompson Insurance Inc. for property, auto, and liability insurance for calendar year thousand four in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-five thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of property, auto, and liability insurance for its utilities department. And whereas, the city has received a proposal for property, auto, and liability insurance for the utilities department from Thompson Insurance, Inc., for the needed coverage for the twenty twenty-four calendar year in the amount of two hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby accepts the proposal for property, auto, and liability insurance for the utilities department, provided from Thompson Insurance, Inc., for the calendar year twenty twenty-four at a cost of two hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents, and authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign the documents necessary to enter into this contract. Pass approved and adopted this sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty-four.
Thanks, Mrs. Davis, and thank you, council, for the floor, keep it in that count. So with that, council, we've heard the reading of the resolution from our clerk, at this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Uh, we have a motion, from Councilmember Day, now, the second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Yeah, Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, any comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now, council on the orders, this is the first reading. It's an order that's to exempt certain items from the municipal sale and use tax during the third full weekend of July, twenty twenty-four, referred to as the back-to-school sales tax holiday. Mrs. Davis.
An ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the third full weekend of July, twenty twenty-four, as authorized by Act twenty seventeen dash one twenty, generally referred to as the new back-to-school state sales tax holiday. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. Section one, in conformity with the provisions of Act twenty seventeen dash one twenty enacted by the Alamo Legislature, during the twenty seventeen regular session, provided for a state state sales tax holiday, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, exalts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at twelve one A.M. on Friday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and ending at twelve midnight, Sunday, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Section two, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by Act twenty seventeen dash one twenty. Section three, the City clerk of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the schedule of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and to forward fed certified copy to the Alamo Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. Section four, this ordinance shall become effective upon publication in the citizens of East Alabama.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. They, with a, they, they, with a, council, come to us. Council, we've heard the first reading, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first read, may I have a motion?
Motion placed on first read.
All right, we have a motion, from Councilmember Day, now, the second.
Second.
Second, from Councilwoman Bailey, any comments or discussion? Okay. At this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council, this is also the first reading on the orders. It's an order that's to amend the code of orders of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter fifty-four miscellaneous provisions and offenses, Article one in general, and Section fifty-four dash eleven, camping on streets and vehicles are in non-residential zones, Section fifty-four dash twelve, violating obstruction of free passage, and Section fifty-four thirteen, remaining on business property after closing. All right, at this time, call the clerk, in space, Mrs. Davis.
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. An ordinance, an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Chapter fifty-four miscellaneous provisions and offenses, Article one in general, adding Sections fifty-four to eleven camping on streets and vehicles or in non-residential zones, Section fifty-four to twelve loitering. Obstruction of free passage in Sections fifty-four to thirteen remaining on business property after closing. Whereas, it is an inherent function of the City of Phoenix City to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and. Whereas, individuals camping or sleeping in public areas which lack for both adequate security from perpetrators of criminal activity and adequate sanction facilities which pose a health risk, and. Whereas, the City of Phoenix City finds that it is necessary and proper to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public by regulating camping on streets and vehicles where in non-residential zones, loitering or obstruction in public areas, and remaining on business property after closing. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Chapter fifty-four miscellaneous provisions and offenses, Article one in general, adding Sections fifty-four to eleven camping on streets and vehicles or in non-residential zones, Section fifty-four to twelve loitering. Obstruction of free passage in Sections fifty-four to thirteen remaining on business property after closing and hereby amended as follows. Section one. Section fifty-four to eleven through fifty-four to thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Phoenix City is created to read as follows. Section fifty-four to eleven camping on streets and vehicles or in non-residential zones. It shall be unlawful for any person to lodge or camp in an automobile, van, truck, camper, trailer, or other vehicle of any kind or nature within the corporate limits of the city or the police jurisdiction thereof between the hours of ten P.M. and six A.M., except licensed or approved mobile home parks or trailer parks or campsites, provided, however, that the provisions of the subsection shall not apply to self-contained units during special events of the areas and for the times and purposes specified. It shall be unlawful for any person to camp upon any street, alley, or public property within the city. As used in this section, the term to camp should be evidenced by sleeping, lighting, or maintaining fires, or use of public property as living quarters. It shall be unlawful for any person to live or sleep in any tent, sleeping bag, or in the open within the city or police jurisdiction thereof, except in an area specifically designated and approved for this purpose, such as permitted and zoned care grounds. It shall be unlawful for any person to live or sleep in any building within any zone in the city not specifically constructed and occupied for residential purposes or for purposes of rentals, such as hotels. Prior to making an arrest for a violation of this ordinance, a law enforcement officer may offer to transport any person in violation of this ordinance to a location that offers emergency housing, if applicable. If a person accepts an offer, may pursue into subdivision, a law enforcement officer may transport the person accordingly. Exemptions. The following shall be exempted from the effect of this section. Use camphouses on any residential zone block where a principal occupant structure exists, but not to exceed two consecutive days during special events of the areas and for the times and purposes specified and has an approved permit. Section fifty-four to twelve loitering, obstruction of free passage. It shall be unlawful for any person, after first being warned by a police officer, to loiter, stand, sit, or lie in or upon any public or quasi-public sidewalk, street, area, mall, or other public property, or upon any portion of private property utilized for public use, so as to hinder or obstruct unreasonably the free passage of pedestrians or vehicles thereof, nor shall any person block or obstruct, or prevent the free access to the entrance to any building open to the public, nor shall any person or persons block or interfere with the free ingress and he rest to private or public property. Prior to making an arrest for a violation of subdivision, a law enforcement officer may offer to transport any person in violation of subdivision to a location that offers emergency housing, if applicable. If a person accepts an offer, may pursue into subdivision, a law enforcement officer may transport the person accordingly. Section fifty-four to thirteen remaining on business property after closing. It shall be unlawful for any person to remain upon paraces or parking areas of any business while such businesses closed without the consent of the owner or manager of the business, provided, however, that in parking areas which are common to more than one business. Such conduct shall be unlawful only while all of the businesses are closed. Section two. The penalty for a violation of this ordinance is provided for in Section one to seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Phoenix City. Section three. The provisions of this ordinance shall be effective upon passage by the City Council. Section four. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed by this ordinance.
Now, we.
Pass approved and adopted.
We see everyone left off with them. This is great, we really appreciate it, this shows the broad, council, we've heard the, uh, reading of the orders, uh, first time, uh, AI, so I think that deserved a hand clap on your last act. This, uh, even this shows the broad, then, uh, teach the rest of the things that we're doing for this screen, so. Thank you, uh, Mike, for that, and with that, uh, council, so, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first read.
Motion to place on first read.
All right, man, they want to go down the history, you know? Oh, so, we want to give the most. Everybody want to go down the history, you know? With that, they say we will give the motion to Councilwoman Carter?
They're going to raise up, no.
And seek the people, no.
Not, not sure, sort of, to raise this up, because the sandwich, thank you, follow my race.
And, uh, we have a motion from, uh, Councilwoman Day.
We're you know, Chris, when they are, it's easy, doesn't it?
We have the motion, and we have the second. Any comments or discussion?
We're talking, that's AI, use that as a positive, as a negative way. Yeah.
Thank you, officer, with that, call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council on the board of partners. There is an ordinance for the Phoenix City Housing Authority Board, that's one office in there. The person who is serving on there now, that's been contacted and has agreed to serve again, so with that, I'd like to ask this council for a motion to reaffirm, Mr. Ken Rogers, the servant, who can't sit at Allen for.
Mount of reaffirm.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, next, council on the license application, this is the first reading. It's an application for an all-premise beer license and all-premise wine license submitted by Shams, please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, the name, but, admitted, submitted by Shams, Naja? For Gas Express LLC, don't visit at Circle K, number seven twenty-two, located at thirty-four twenty-four, Crossman Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
I have a letter from the Police Department that reads as follows. Your councilmembers reference Shams, now, Jim, amen, amen, Chitokwa, Gas Express LLC, do a business at Circle K, number seven twenty-two, thirty-four twenty-four, Crossway Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, thirty-six eight six nine. I have reviewed the applications for all-premise beer, as well as all-premise wine licenses, and I have no objections to the issuance of the license to the applicant based upon your use of their criminal background investigation. Sincerely, Chief George B. Stoll. I have a letter from the Fire Department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the applications submitted by Shams, now, for Gas Express LLC, do a business as Circle K, number seven twenty-two, located at thirty-four twenty-four, Crossman Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, thirty-six eight six nine. This applicant has applied for an all-premise gear and all-premise wine licenses. A final inspection has been conducted, and the building meets the fire code requirements for this type of occupancy. Sincerely, Chief Chris Lynn Cady. I have also had. I have, also have a letter from the building department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Shams, Naljim, of Gas Express LLC, doing business at Circle K, number seven twenty-two, located at thirty-four twenty-four, Crosswind Drive, for off-premise beer and off-premise wine licenses. A final inspection was conducted on April first, twenty twenty four. This office has no obje- no objection to the approval of these licenses. Signed off by Ray Rogers, chief building officials. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we have all heard the reading of, for the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first read, please.
Motion to wait for my first read.
Uh, we have a motion from councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion? Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter, yes. Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor, yes. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call, uh, crime, Mr. Ford.
Morning, Mayor, and we got one, uh, claiming, uh, agenda today, found out Keena Lewis. Ms. Lewis was traveling on Southwest Street. Uh, and she, uh, get a white hole that damaged, uh, her vehicle. Uh, we're not lying along this claim because, uh, by the contractors and the ones that buildings, um, apartment complex, they are in, it's their responsibility to maintain the road and the drivers. And, uh, so my recommendation is to ban the claim. I would think that, uh, Ms. Lewis and send her in the right direction as far as getting her vehicle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Yes, sir.
Council, we heard the recommendation from our attorney, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve his recommendation.
Much your approval.
I have a motion from councilman Day, may I have a second? Second, councilman Gordon. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter, yes. Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. All right, thanks. Thank you all so much. Sorry, fixate what you all do, uh, thank you all, keep there, Councilman. Thank you for support, keep moving, got the count. So we, we're all on this team together, and we, so we can't buy each other. Then we say, uh, on the card again, thank you all. Please pass on to all the boys of the city, and we appreciate them and thank them for what they do. Council, is anyone, there's anything they would like to add or take away?
We all have one thing. And I, um, forgot to mention that at the beginning of the month. Of course, I would feel it's been, and still got feeling my best, but.
I'm here.
Um, last month, we brought, uh, a concern about dumping, you know, in our communities, and that's something, like I said, we we try, in reality, we try to mitigate that, um, but on sixteen Avenue, the second district in particular, um, if our office was contacted in reference to dumping on site where no, no house exists, just an open, uh, field. And so office was contacted and, uh, so when we got the information over to the city, uh, the proper department of the city, they began, um, rectifying that issue right away. And so the response that I received back in the office was from citizens here in Phoenix City. And I, again, like I said, I failed to mention it on first, um, council meeting, but I made sure, made a note to make sure I do it this time. And they said to thank the city workers, uh, and the city council, uh, for hearing me. And they said they are proud to live in a city that cares about its citizen. And so again, these are comments of breathfulness and thankfulness, uh, from our citizens. So thank you, city manager, your team, excuse me, I just moved. But your team for, uh, and, and, you know, again, like I said, we, we see the growth in our city. Again, we are a very nice and clean and, um, um, growing city, and we want to keep it that way. We'll do all that we can, using our guidelines and our power, uh, to make sure, uh, that again, we live in a city where we worship and play and we attend school and, and, and worship. And so again, um, on behalf of those citizens, I am proud to report, um, their comments, city manager. Thank you to your team and the actors, and they are very honored once again to live in a city that cares about its citizen. Those are the words of the city.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you so much.
See, it's not even the same yet, so.
Uh, Mayor, um, I know we quit this on the web, so I don't say everything, but I, during the, uh, the sketching, I asked you about the bridge, so let's just thank the bridge, because we open. Those who out there are listening, please come down and join into the ceremony at that time. I have a lot of people asking me about the bridge. I just want to thank, uh, those who did bother me this part of the turn. Uh, this way, chances to my comrades down there, if you're a fresh show, I just want to thank them. Hey, thank you. That's all right.
And one other thing that the city did, they put a post to prevent dumping. So if you get bored, any type of automobile cannot drive directly back there, uh, and dump. So that was done, cleaned up and put up the post to prevent dumping. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, any please?
No, just appreciate it, and just thank y'all, just thank you, thank Clark, you, they took you, uh, musical album, and all women in the ways that have passed on zero, so, and they're alive for the next one, and they're excited.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Thanks to everyone, and certainly the, uh, certainly thanks to our citizens also being a part of this community, it takes all of us, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of, uh, growth. But there's also a lot of care and love in this community, and that's why I want to stress to everyone that it takes all of us moving, uh, in the right direction for the right reasons too. Not just for the environment right now, as we're being Phoenix City, but also in the future. So we thank you all for, uh, being a part of this community. I thank the city council, I thank this department here, I thank this, the workers of this community, and let's always keep it pure in our hearts that we're doing things for the right reason. And let's continue to show more and more empathy. Thank you all, thanks to C T B V for bringing this, and thank God for taking this, uh, individually and as well as collectively. Thank you all so much, and we do stand the trial.